That was to guide us down the direction that you see fit. That was to make all the decisions that keep our school moving forward. I ask all these things here. Thank you for your input.
Hopefully turn a couple of lights out to put anybody asleep. But it sure does help you see the screen a little bit better. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. This first part, this public forum has been informational. Also, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end, so don't be shy in doing that. Can everybody hear me if I don't use the microphone? I hate using the microphone, but if you can't hear me, I want to make sure you can. Because this is important stuff. It's school safety, district safety, and at the end of the day, it's the most important topic we have in school. If our kids don't feel safe, if our teachers don't feel safe, we're not going to function correctly as a district. So this is extremely important stuff. Try not to bore you to death with it. There's a couple of, I have a, let's see if this part goes up. Just three main goals to tonight's presentation. One is to give you a little bit of background, what we've been doing in the district to improve district campus security throughout the school year. The other is to explain a couple of options we have as a district as we're moving forward to try to make our district even more secure. And the last one is to inform the community members that are here tonight that haven't been on the district safety committee or are not a part of the faculty and staff, though all those people have heard this presentation. So tonight's purpose is to get into other community members, get your take on it before we move forward. So some of the things we've been doing this school year that I think really helped, obviously we still have some concerns. Right here, if you don't know the buildings you're looking at, this is the elementary, and this is what we call the administration building. Obviously, this is where all our elementary classrooms are. Over here is the elementary library and at least one elementary classroom, elementary music room as well. In the past, these doors here and then right over here, which is not in the picture, is the doors into the administration building. Those doors have been unlocked, so the kids could come and go. Kids and teachers could come and go. We had some more, unfortunately, school shootings in our country, but one of the things we thought we needed to do as district administration is secure our doors, so we locked these. We started locking them. Well, when you lock those doors, sometimes you get people locked out of the building. That's just as unsafe. So right as school began, if you know Mr. Chestnut and Mr. Jordan, please pat them on the back, but they secured this area between these two buildings with this fence here and then on the far side, where the picture was taken, there's a fence and a gate, so that elementary can come in and out these doors, get to the library, music, so forth, or they can use the gate and the fence over here to go out to the playground. But now these doors can stay unlocked, so kids can come and go safely, but our buildings are secure because you can't get in that area unless you climb that fence. Okay? So that's one of the things we've done to try to tighten up security on our campuses. Same concept here, just so you know what we're looking at. This is the junior high building, and this is the high school building. Again, same exact situation, doors to the junior high, back over here, the doors that come in by, the back doors by the gym. For years, they've been left unlocked, so kids could come and go. Times we lived in, violent, people were doing crazy things, so we locked them. Well, same situation. We lock these, kids can't get in and out as they need to. That's unsafe as well. So Mr. Chestnut and Mr. Jordan built this fence for us, and the open space there is a gate. Works very well. Now, our kids can come and go, but that area is secure, and you can't get into that area without a key through that gate.
Can I ask you a question, Arndt?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So go back to the elementary slide, please. Why didn't you take the bar off, wait until the ceiling might be dead or another one? Because you can still get in that way.
Sure. I don't have an answer for you at this point in time. If it's something we need to ask maintenance to do, we sure can do that.
Because the other one just secures everything, and this one doesn't.
Okay. This served its purpose tremendously this year, but we can get them to work on that over the summer as well. Thank you for pointing that out. This picture shows you, we have taken and numbered all our entrances, our exterior doors. For that, the reason we did that is in case we do have an emergency, first responders can get to the area they need to get to without a lot of confusion. So you see, this is the front of the elementary. We know that's entry forty-nine, entrance fifty. You go to this. Our goal is to put this map in every sheriff's department patrol car, every ambulance in this area, fire trucks. Any first responder may pull up to our district so that as we're communicating with them, we can tell them, no, go to door, oh, this is the secondary. Go to door twenty-five, and then nowhere to go, instead of driving around the building three or four times looking for the correct entrance. This has already paid off, guys, in a non-emergency way. I guess about a month ago, I had, again, if you see a Brown's County Sheriff's Deputy or the sheriff, thank them. I didn't realize they did this, but almost every night, they come and they patrol our campus, and they'll park their car, and they'll walk around and check all our exterior doors. Well, that night, the patrol officer found one of our doors unlocked in the annex. And so their protocol, though, is to call a second officer before they sweep the building. So they called me as well. I came over after they swept the building, we locked it up, and made sure everything was secure, but the officer that was originally checking the doors said, you know, door number such and, it was forty-eight. Door number forty-eight, I got a concern about that one. I said, I know exactly what you're talking about, because I knew where forty-nine and fifty were. So forty-eight's the back door that would go into the office area. So it's already paying off, and it already paid off in a non-emergency way. I call this the Iola Triangle. It's not a very good setup. Right over here is the nurse's office, and we all know, or most of us know, that we only have one nurse, so she serves both campuses. These doors are very good. They secure our elementary classroom hallway, and they stay locked. Okay? And so for kids to get back, an adult has to come in and lock that door for them. These doors go out the tunnel, if you know what I'm talking about, that leads towards the secondary campus. These doors stay unlocked, because secondary kids need to get in to the nurse. And so that's what says, it's a dangerous triangle here. So what we've done, one of the things we've done, let me see if it's on the next slide. Yes. We talked about installing the door access systems where there is, there'll be a camera somewhere in this area that will feed into the front office, and so as students get to these doors, you can buzz them in. And there'll be a camera just outside these doors that feeds to the front office, and these doors will stay locked now, which will make the building much more secure. And so when she sees a secondary kid come up to go to the nurse, she can buzz them in. And so we're doing the same thing with the high school doors here in front. Ms. Darby will be able to buzz people in there, and the front door at the elementary as well. The same thing will be done. These are going to be installed in June. And then we're still looking at installing some cameras. We feel like we need to put some cameras here in the cafeteria. It's a large gathering area. If something happens, it's very hard to sort out what happened, because there's so many bodies in here. And then in the gym, obviously, you've got a lot going on in the gym. If you have a big game, thank goodness we live in Iowa. We don't have those problems, but you've all seen it on SportsCenter. Happens all the time in high school gyms. We're going to be putting some cameras in those areas as well. Some of the other things we're still working on implementing, you see the person up there, self-defense class, one of our district safety committee members, Mr. Greg Moore. He's well-trained in this, and he's offered his time for free to come up and train our teachers in self-defense. And that's one of the things we talk about when it comes to school violence. And you talk to people that have dealt with these situations, have been around them, have investigated them, it's just fighting back helps some. So we're going to be implementing that, I think, during staff development. We've just been, we spent a year trying to figure out a time it would work for teachers. Investigator James Ellis with the Brown's County Sheriff's Department, he's put together a complete evacuation reunification plan for our district. He's doing it for the whole county, so that every school in the county, their plan is similar, but he did us first, so that he would use our plan to do other people's. And we'll be rolling that out officially for next school year. And the other thing we've done to increase safety, and again, some of these only take effect, God forbid, someone does something crazy at our schools, but if so, then we're trying to be as prepared as we can be. So the last thing there is bleeding control kits. We had a staff document on that, April twenty-fourth, and so you can see six district employees are trained on how to use this. It's basically a tourniquet kit to stop bleeding if something bad were to happen in our buildings. I put on there too, because there's some very humble people in our community that would never tell you, so I'm telling on them, but these people here purchased all those bleeding control kits for our district. So if you see them, please tell them thank you. And every classroom will have one of those, and every common area will have at least one, if not two. So that's another thing we're trying to make it a little safer for our kids. So that gets me to the second bullet. What are some other options available to us as a school district? You see ISD Police Department, that's not going to happen. Financially, that's never going to happen, but we're not a big enough district to do that as well. You see this in the larger districts like Fort Ben ISD and Houston ISD and so forth. We already have an SRO agreement, the Brown's County Sheriff's Department. If you don't know Deputy Lasso, she is our SRO that serves our district. Then some other options are school marshal, guardian plan, or doing nothing. And I don't agree with the last one at all. The last one would give me grief, trying to go to bed every night, thinking, I haven't done everything I can as a superintendent to make our district and our campuses safe as it can possibly be. So that leads us to these two, and I'm going to talk about those two for just a minute. Again, why explore these options? I had the opportunity to sit in a meeting with James Ellis this year, and the people he was meeting with were five or six FBI agents. Two of them were actually the lead investigators for the Santa Fe shooting, which unfortunately, that occurred a year ago Saturday. May eighteenth is when that happened in Santa Fe, and I think it kind of made all of us twin into a little bit, because that's really close to home. So as you talk to these guys, some of the things you learn about is just the mentality of these shooters. And right now, as a school, what we are is a soft target. That's the term they use for schools and churches, you're a soft target. And a lot of these shooters are really powers, and that's why they attack soft targets, because they're not going to get shot back at. Now, to deal with this, the kid in Santa Fe, as they started asking him why he did what he did, he started shooting at art classrooms, and he told the investigators, well, I shot at him because I knew they wouldn't fight back. He told them, he said, what do you want me to do, shoot at the football team? They'll beat me up. That's what I'm talking about. We don't want to be a soft target. And then response time. Yes, we have an SRO here. Sometimes she's here, sometimes she's not. What's scary is when you learn about some of these kids, they do some planning. And if anyone ever planned to hurt our district, our schools, and had enough sense to hurt our SRO first, what's going to go on until the other first responders get here? Because I can tell you, in Santa Fe, there was eight or nine or ten killed, and that all happened within the first three to five minutes of the incident. Three to five minutes. And then the reason that kid quit shooting at students, because officers showed up and started shooting at him. So response time is a big thing to me. Scares me to death. And not that we don't have great sheriff's department, but if no one's in the north part of the county, how else is it going to take them to get here? Food for thought as we're moving forward. So why can we talk about these two right here? Because in 2013, the Texas Legislature passed a law that says a school district can opt for these options. School marshal plan, that says school safety training, which everyone now has just turned guardian plan. That's why we can do it. In 2013, the legislature gave us the ability to talk about these programs. They both have very different intentions, though, and I don't know if you can read this, it's kind of small print up here, so I'm just going to tell you. The top was the marshal plan, and it essentially wants to give educators, employees armed law enforcement capabilities and responsibilities. So it's essentially making them a school marshal. The guardian plan provides handpicked armed educators and employees the ability to defend themselves and students in the event of active shooter, or active killer is what they're now using. So you see, they're two, kind of have two different outcomes. Again, this goes on to say the same thing. The plan allows educators to act as armed security officers, pseudo peace officers in the absence of law enforcement. And guardian plan allows you to protect yourself, to defend yourself until law enforcement gets there. Does anyone want to see the difference in those two? And in my mind, I don't want any educators having these responsibilities. They don't need to act as law enforcement, but they do need the ability to protect themselves until law enforcement gets here.
I have a question. It says student and faculty members, is that armed students?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. This provides students and faculties in armed self-defense. No, students would never be armed. Probably poor wording in the definition, but that's the definition of students. Good question. I'm glad you saw that in ass. I saw that today, and I need to point that out. No students would ever be armed. Side by side here are the differences. This T-CO is the specific training a school marshal would have to go through. It's classroom-based, it's eighty hours. Guardian plan requires sixteen hours. This is the difference I like here, too. School marshal, when you're out qualifying on the firing range, you only have to shoot seventy-five percent. Guardian plan, ninety percent. So already, to me, this is a stronger plan up here. Includes arrest procedures and laws. I don't need any faculty members dealing with that. They've got enough to deal with. Okay? Strict state requirements and rules. So again, you're becoming a peace officer over here. Over here, you're getting trained on how to respond, shoot accurately, and just deal with safety, stopping an active shooter. So one time for any of us that need, we do keep that ongoing? This will be ongoing, and I'll get to that prior. Again, in this case, this only happens in the worst-case scenario.
Where is the firearm that needs to play?
We're going to get there. Have the same points again. There were a few different on here. This is one, the guardian plan handgun must be locked in a container. Okay? Now, I'm not going to try to fool you or snow you either. I do know that they're currently trying to pass legislation to change that. I don't know if this passed or not.
That's the house.
Okay? But if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't get passed, that doesn't make sense, because you're not going to be able to tell an active killer, timeout, my gun's locked in the office, I'll be right back. So that one, that one's never makes sense to me. But again, this is T-CO training. This is customizable, so you find someone that comes out and trains you on your side and your facilities, how you should handle the situation. And again, I can't stress this enough. This is acting like a peace officer. This is protecting students in the worst-case scenario. That's the only time you'll see this take place. Again, there's some legislation that may change this as well. I don't know if this passed, but what I read, the proposed legislation, wouldn't have changed the number for us, because that had to do with enrollment, and our enrollment was not high enough to warrant a second school marshal. And then the last bullet, extremely important, psychological exams before we allow anyone to be a part of that program. So that's kind of the comparison to the two we're talking about. Hang with me a little bit. So both programs require an application and screening process by district administration. What that means is me and the board would approve the employees that want to apply for this. Okay?
Do you think that people will apply or are they going to not apply?
Ah, well, the thought right now is to let district employees know, if you are interested in being a guardian, apply. Just because someone applies doesn't mean they're getting here. And then obviously, both programs require psychological tests, exam, and so forth. So wanted to share that information with you, because our district safety committee seen this presentation before. We spent a couple hours talking about this stuff. And so in December sixth, I ran it up the flagpole with these people, this, our district safety committee right here. And you may be asking, why are some in different colors? And I want to explain that to you, because you're going to see some results in just a minute, some survey results. So everyone in this green, kind of duller color, they were here. They were here at the meeting, and they voted. These here in the brighter yellow were not here, but they are district employees, so I had access to talk to them throughout the workday, and I asked them, after our conversations, to still please go into the survey and vote. And these in white were unable to make the meeting, so they didn't vote. Okay? So just want to be clear with you about who was here, who voted, and why these three were not here, but they still voted, because I went and talked to them with this presentation. Felt like they weren't informed enough to voice their opinion. So we have one question at the end of that meeting. Which safety program would you choose for all ISD? And the guardian program was in the red. Okay? So I kind of left that out there. Let it get out in the community. We're a smaller community. People talk about everything that's going on at the school. That's okay. School's the center of the community. Didn't hear any negative feedback? You know, I told people, here's someone that does, that completely disagrees, send them to me so they can talk. Didn't hear anything. So February thirteenth, had a district-wide faculty meeting. So every employee in the district was invited to attend this faculty meeting. They heard the same presentation you guys just heard. This was everyone that made it, so forty of our employees were able to make it that afternoon. The reason it wasn't more, I did it right after school, so none of the transportation could be there. So that's why you don't see any bus drivers up there. And then there were just people that had things going on, life in general, doctor's appointments, sick, family matters, so forth. So forty employees, we asked them the same question. Are you in favor of a guardian program? You had forty responses, that means everybody on that list responded. This right here, guys, works out to be one. So it was thirty-nine in favor and one not in favor. I did ask, if you aren't in favor of it, come talk to me. Let me know why you're not in favor of it. Let me see if I can clear anything up for you. Let me see if you can convince me otherwise. I mean, maybe this isn't what we want. And no one ever came and visited with me. Didn't leave the bus drivers out. So we set up another day, and I met with the bus drivers and a few other teachers who weren't able to make that meeting. I'm sorry, Mr. Callahan, I did not come with the survey question that day. There were enough of us in the room, a small enough group. I didn't hear any negative feedback. It was, thank you for sharing this with us. I liked this idea, I liked this program. So I've run it by as many people as I can think to run it by. That's why we're here tonight. I want to run it by you, because in a few minutes, when we get into our regular meeting, I'm going to ask the board to consider these things. In order to implement a guardian plan, you're talking about revising these three board policies, GKA local, DH local, CKC local. Essentially, you're revising those, because those are the ones right now that tell you, you cannot carry concealed weapon on our property. So the way they'll be revised, and our legal representation will do it, this will be worded so that board-approved employees can carry concealed. That's the short version. Their page is long. I don't think you want to read all the pages of that, but that's what will be revised, and that's what they'll vote on tonight. What it is not, I've always thought this part was pretty interesting, too. All teachers are not going to be armed. Nope. You don't want to be armed, you don't have to be armed. Teachers be forced to carry a weapon? No. No one's going to be forced to do anything. And it's open to anyone and everyone that wants to carry a weapon. None of that is true. It is board-approved employees. This is the P one right here. It does not mean that those guardians will go track down the shooter. They are not a SWAT team. They're not going to kick indoors. What they're going to do is, if, God forbid, we have an active shooter in our district, they're going to hunt them down where they are and protect every person around them that they can. That's their, that's their job. And it's crazy that we live in times now when we have to think this way, but that's their job. They're not a SWAT team. They're not on-call twenty-four-seven. One, you're not supposed to know who they are, but those of us that do, we're not going to be calling them, hey, annex was unlocked, you run over there and clear that building for us? No. No, that's not out of this words. And you can get out of the program anytime you want. Anytime you want. It's a very serious responsibility, and that's why I've tried to drug it out over the entire school year. Wanting feedback, once I gave it to the safety committee, give me feedback. Once I gave it to the faculty and staff, give me feedback. Now I'm giving it to the community, give me feedback. And we'll talk more about that when you get out of the program anytime you want. Just for your information, all these districts have the guardian program. That's where I've gotten most of my information from, are these districts right here. And then this is just a picture someone sent me. I think bottom ISD is up northeast of Dallas, but a friend sent me this picture beginning of the school year, because what I was looking for was the picture of Anderson sign, because honestly, I've had community members say, we won't put our signs up. Okay, well, not that simple. You don't just go put the sign up. But you can see what it says here for bottom ISD, board of trustees, that's all the licensed employees on this campus to carry concealed handguns to better protect our staff and our students and staff. It's the whole purpose of it. So this was the process when I started this, started thinking about this, actually, last May, when Santa Fe took place. These are things I wanted to make sure we did this correctly. We had surveyed the safety committee, faculty meeting. This is a step you were unaware of, maybe. We had one of those superintendents from back here come during closed session and talk to our board, gave them an opportunity to ask questions, anything they were concerned about, or wanted to know more about. We did that step. And then we are at step four, public forum. So we did the first one, second one, third one, fourth one, now we're right here. So in a few minutes, the board will vote on revising those policies, and then we'll start these other steps, very serious steps. Some other information, maybe Mr. Pointer had a question here? I don't know. I was just throwing some extra random information up here. The district Uh, the district implies or provides employees a stipend. So what that stipend is for, is for that employee to go out and purchase that handgun, because that employee will own that handgun, not the district. The district will not own any weapons. Um, so the gun's registered to the employee, there will be a form that the employee has to fill out with the district that gives all that registration information though. So, you know, it will be Kristen Sajewski, uh, the caliber of her handgun, the serial number on it will list all that information, so we have that for our records.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
On the stipend? When you get a, when you get a teacher's stipend, are you going to give it in a, in a bonus structure where they get the whole five hundred dollars? Or is it going to be a stipend where it's deducted?
It'll be the whole five hundred dollars.
This, this.
Um, all guardians will use the same handgun? That might sound like it's a crazy statement, but one of those districts up there, their guardians carry whatever handgun they want to carry. That's crazy. Uh, one of the reasons you would use the same handgun, some, God forbid something happens, you know how to use each other's weapon. You're trained on one weapon, you know how to use it. Um, frangible, frangible ammunition, hard word for me to say. Um, some people confuse that with hollow point, it's not hollow point. Some frangible ammunition looks like hollow point. The purpose of frangible ammunition is so if you fire it and you miss your target, it doesn't continue through every wall in between you and someone else. It disintegrates when it hits its target. That's the type of ammunition that we use in our program. Uh, here was the training piece, four trainings per year, two per semester, and we do that every year. Um, range qualifications, again, we're going back to that ninety percent. Subject, random drug test, um, required to disclose, this is a new one here. So a couple of things. Mr. Pointer's question was where the guns be stored? Overnight, they're at their home. They're never left in the school building if that employee's not in the school. Um, there will be safes in their classroom, so at any point in the day they don't want to be carrying, they put it in their safe. But at the end of the day, the gun goes home with them.
But they are allowed to have it on them.
They are allowed to have it on them. Um, and that's one of the things we'll be looking at, yes, if we go this direction and we start talking about stipends in our budget, one of the districts is given a little more stipend for concealed clothing, because it's very expensive. Okay? That might be part of our stipend too. Again, we'll get there, once we decide this is the direction we want to go as a community and as a district. Um, this was very interesting to me. So, we have an employee that's carrying, I'm going to keep picking on Miss Sajewski. Uh, she told me she had a forty-four she wanted to carry, I said, no. I'm joking. She, well, she and I haven't talked much about this at all. Um, but if she's one of the guardians and she has a head cold and she took over-the-counter sinus medication before she left, she better be calling me to tell me, hey, I took some cold medicine, I am not carrying today, my gun is at home. That's an everyday procedure for any of our guardians. Anything that's going on with that person, they're not carrying, and it's left at home. And they're to let me know that every day.
Please be a Taipei personality.
I'm sorry?
Please be a Taipei personality so that they can follow.
Follow direction, right? I know. Um, and if you, if they're interested in this, you might see those personalities that go that direction. Uh, but talking to one of the superintendents, said he gets this call at least once a week. I have a headache, I don't feel well. You're not participating in it, unless they got it home. Any change in that teacher's physical health, obviously mental health, they would not be carrying that thing.
Can I ask a question on what I was saying?
Yes.
I know, like, I need to be careful. And I'm a little creative, forty-five, eighty, there's this one. There's a difference between hand size and liability function, something that we're a force of the day to carry the same time. And, uh, it might not fit one person to the other in that case. You know, liability accuracy, all that, you know, loads into that.
Sure.
Taking into consideration, I don't know.
No, that's a good point. Hadn't thought about that. I'm making this decision off the fact that one district's allowed to carry anything, and all the other districts are called too, they all have the same gun. So that's why I'm, I'm stating that, that's, yes, sir?
About that, one of the things that we were discussing with officers while we talked, was it's more about the same caliber than the other.
Same.
The ammunition.
So what's, what's caliber is a topic of?
Non-lethal.
We're discussing non-lethal.
Uh, one of the statement on the qualification, and I know you guys don't know this, but I think having, um, and I, I think this is great, people's ability to have been around firearms, and there's a difference between a whole machine, a machine, but people that might have military training in the background, stuff like that, way more, somebody that makes it better.
Sure. Excellent. Um, so, there may be more questions, I said, I just wanted to give you some of that random information to be part of our, our program. Again, guys, what I go to as a superintendent? Mr. Putt, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I know that in this day, in a society that's litigious nature, will we be providing our guardians, uh, something like Texas Law Shield, or one of the legal insurance providers that, because these days the perk can suit.
Yes, sir. Those other schools have that liability part of their plan. Um, and we follow up with our, uh, like student liability, facilities, uh, insurance provider, and it, there's not an increase in our, forgive me, not an insurance agent premium that we pay, uh, if you have this program.
That, individually, though, they might have lost.
That's what I got.
So that's something we'll have to check into. I just know as a school district, what we pay will might increase if we have this program. That's something we followed up with, um, those other districts. But again, my thing is response time. That, trust me, I've told you, I will brag on Grange County Insurance Department to the cows come home, because they do great things for us. Um, but they have no control where they're at when a very bad incident starts to occur. That's not on them. They may be called to the south part of the county. Um, so that's my thing, that's, that's why I'm leaning this direction. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir?
I do have a couple of questions. Uh, first question is, what's the cost of a psychological evaluation for each person? Is this something around five thousand, eleven, psychological?
I think the, uh, the other, there are two districts that I've really been working close to, I think they said their psychological exams were a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty dollars a student. Yeah.
And the second question is, if you could go back to that slide that shows the high school layout? Because you don't have all the schools, right?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So, in your, in your vision of this guardian shooting, are you going to have somebody located in each one of those buildings?
No, not if they're qualified, if they're not qualified, no. That would be my dream. Obviously, ideal, that's what you want. There's at least one person in every building. But I'm not going to take someone and force them to be a guardian so that I have a person in that building. There may be some buildings that don't have guardians. I think that's much more safe than putting someone, hey, carry concealed so I have a person in this building. That's not safe either.
But you don't know which building they're in either.
I don't know which building they'll be in.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, that would be ideal, Mr. England, if I could have one in each building. But again, I, I could.
Different question.
Sure.
So is there a perimeter fence completely around the whole school?
Not.
Where nobody can, you know, unless they have one getting to the captain or the other So there's a lot of entry points.
There are. That's why we're going, that's one of the reasons we're going in this direction.
Why aren't we going kids first?
Well, just like you said about the other, I'm over it. The deal is, you take Sandy Hook for an example. They had all the safety measures in place you could have, and that guy shot through the door, got in and killed a number of people. We're never going to stop them from doing it if they want to do it. The goal is, if they start to do it, we can start to protect our kids and ourselves, and maybe put it into them killing anybody else. But a perimeter fence can be climbed, just like that fence you pointed out a minute ago.
For something? I experienced this, that this year in one of my classrooms.
Yes, you and I have had that conversation. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am?
Is the medical, the psychological, and then the, um, gun accuracy all independently assessed? Because I know, like, when I took my CHL, it's like, okay, we're going to sit here until you pass.
No, they're, they're done independently of each, of one another. Different groups will do the psychological.
No, I'm talking about, like, independent of anybody's decision at the school, right? Like, it would be like a medical.
Who's evaluating?
Who's evaluating the criteria and whether somebody's psychologically okay, or if they're on antidepressant medicines, then, you don't want to say is there like a doctor sign off? Because I, I know, like, a lot of people would take antidepressants, but that would, to me, would, um, who's, who's evaluating and saying, okay, we've checked your medical records, you're on prescription medicine, so you're not going to do it and not rely on, is it like an independent, and also the shooting, um, accuracy? Like, is that independently assessed? Because I know, like, on the CHL, it's like, well, we've got options, let's just shoot till you get there, you know?
I think I understand where you're coming from. The psychological part is often done by the person that's going to do the testing, and they give us the feedback. This person is psychologically, is mentally sound. Um, their medical records, I guess we can make that part of our, our plan. If you want to be a guardian, you have to, you have to share your medical record with us.
I think that would be.
And I think that's an excellent idea. I, that's one step more than what these other people have done. I'm all for that.
Just because it would just add another layer of, I know there's some medications that, you know.
No, I think that's great. I think that's great. And unfortunately, you can't always trust the honor system. So, I, I think we can very easily make that part of our program. Uh, and then the shooting, obviously, uh, someone from the district's going to be there when they're doing it.
Is that through the state?
I say you get one chance to do ninety percent. If you don't, you're not carrying, you can come back and try the next time.
So is that through the state, the testing for that, or is it like the, like a CHL? You can apply to become a CHL instructor. This program, guardian program, is it through the state or is it kind of like a CHL program? There's going to be some guy that can apply to give this, take.
It's like CHL.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my question. We weren't.
Can we request it? Can we request it through a costel or somebody like that? We all try to.
Somebody that's going to be like.
Yeah, well, I mean, these people are certified to do this. It's not just random Joe that, hey, you mind taking this online test so you can train us? No, these are people that have the back, background you were talking about earlier, the military, the law enforcement, and this is what they do as this kind of training.
Information that we're using.
Absolutely. I mean, we're going to turn around.
The ones that just kind of do that sort of patch.
We're going to use probably the same people in those districts up there.
Have you had any conversations with teachers that indicated that there's more than one or two that are interested in doing this?
Oh, interested in doing it? How did that, how did any of those conversations?
It's a good idea.
I haven't had any of those conversations yet, because I feel like we need to get over the hump of, do we want this? Does the board want to vote this into action? And then we'll start that ball rolling. Um, we'll see how that goes. There might not be, but two people, well, two's better than nine, so.
On that high, on those high schools that are already doing this, how many guardians do they have?
Um, it's different numbers.
Nor should, how many of them?
The Nor shoulds not up there. Nor should, and I can't tell you.
Yeah, it would.
I can tell you, they have fewer than the Anderson child. And I can't sit here and give you a number on the hours either, because I don't know who's, who's interested, who's going to qualify.
While you're on that, Scott, will you let them know that they will not be known?
Yeah.
Others will not know who, where, or anything.
Yeah.
No, but, I know, you know, some people may think.
From a budget standpoint, is it something that can legally be, I mean, if it's a five hundred dollar stipend and then there's a budget lineup that says five hundred dollars guardian stipend, not that hard. You know, is it something that legally, that's?
You still won't know who's getting that.
No, but I know that there's one person. You know, is that something that can be hidden from public information?
It's the same as you can track and monitor to see how many they're off.
It, it, I mean, I don't want to know how many, and I don't want anybody to know how many. I want everybody to assume there's forty of them.
I think that's part of living, I think that's part of living in a small community, we say that no one's going to know who it is. Probably after a year of one, you're going to know who they are.
They're the ones that all of a sudden will hug you ladies.
Yeah.
All the teachers, everybody gets a stipend.
So, yeah, that one person that used to hug you, you don't do anymore, that's because they're strapped.
And this is all employees, not just teachers?
This is all employees. I'm going to open it up to all employees.
I would like to add, if, just considered by the board, I would like the additional layer of the medical records, because I know, I mean, I think it's a, just an extra layer of protection.
Sure.
If they consider it, I would like to ask them to propose that.
Absolutely.
And then, Mr. Martindale, I wanted to kind of implement the safety things that we have as well, that we put in place. When we have, I know somebody asked me a couple weeks ago about substitutes, you know, if they go through a training or whatever, coming here, they get a substitute or whatever, then, you know, just kind of going to wire drill, you know, they would need to know what our requirement is.
Yes.
And coming into this for us.
Yeah, that should be part of our new sub-training, is letting them know we have a guardian program.
But there was an article just recently about a sub that was there at Santa Fe the day of the shooting.
True.
There was a lady wrote an article that was a sub at Santa Fe the day of the shooting. And it talked about how her being a sub, she wasn't really trained, like, what to do and how to protect those kids.
And they didn't want us, like, ask me to help them.
And, like, they just told her, go to the next available classroom. Well, you can't run through a hallway with a group of kids. And, like, she was saying in her article, she didn't have keys to lock doors and stuff, which I don't really know how y'all do it here, but, so, I mean, I do think that subs do need training on.
Sure. Absolutely.
If this happens, and maybe, like, first semester and second semester, because you have new subs coming throughout the year.
And I believe, Santa Fe, it may have been that sub you're talking about, uh, there was a teacher, when they heard the shooting, pulled the firearm. Big mistake, huge mistake. Because what do you do? Then you bring all the kids to the classroom to get shot at. So, there, we can train for hours and hours and hours, and we give that information to teachers and subs. Um, when that emergency occurs, you don't know how these people are going to respond, unfortunately. Uh, but you're, you're correct, subs need to note, we have this on our campuses if, if something were to happen.
Ken, that's a question going back, outside of the guardian, but back to where we're going for safety for the district. We're going to install those locks or those pustres? What was, what was our budget we set aside? Are, are we within the budget on that?
We are. We set aside ten thousand dollars, and that bid came in at eight, eighty-six or eighty-eight hundred dollars.
For the extended campus?
For those door access to be put in.
Other things we planned on doing, or just kind of, just kind of one bill, kind of look at it?
No, there's other things we plan on doing, though we're going to make sure we stay in our budget.
Right, right. Uh, so here's kind of, I'm going to step back now. Is there a strategic plan that we're, so we're aging, and we're going to hold on to these things? What's the, the thought on being able to build these into more of a capital plan?
To, my plan was to get this safety program in place, uh, to get our budget better balanced, and to create a district facilities committee. So, and I see that probably kicking off in September next year, and so that committee would tour our district and prioritize, uh, what we think needs to be fixed next, and then we start trying to budget for that. So that's my plan when it comes to renovating or building new facilities. Because this is a nightmare. This, the secondary campus is a safety nightmare. But that's how buildings were built when this was built. And then now you have new buildings built, and they're going two, three stories high because you don't want a bunch of exterior buildings.
Now, if I thought, we want to extend more money on it down the road and see if we're gonna have more...
Absolutely.
Facilities upgrade that would do to save that money.
Sure. Well, and so the biggest piece of that door access is going into the elementary, which is new. So we're not wasting money there. Of that, eighty-six, eighty-eight hundred, like twenty-three hundred is the high school, and the rest of that is the elementary. And those are things we're looking at. That Monica helps me, I keep pointing at her that she helps me a lot, meeting with those people and walking the campuses and seeing where we need to add cameras. And we need to be updating our cameras to IP cameras so that we can pull them up online instead of going to the little closet. So all those things, but those things are gonna be addressed by a whole different committee starting next year. And that committee, I hope they have their shoes on, because we're gonna do a lot of walking, a lot of talking. But that committee's gonna be around for years because we've got a lot to discuss and figure out. Any other questions, comments, concerns? And I thank you for everything you brought up. It's good stuff to talk about. Yeah, there was a, there's another item on that list that we'd like to get is the Ray Panic Button. So, this is an app for your phone. And essentially, what would happen, for years now, the plan or the process, if there's a campus emergency, you know, in your written plan, it says, miss so-and-so, we'll get on the intercom and tell everyone to lock down. That's not very realistic. And so the plan is to get this app, and every employee in the district would have the app and can set it off. And it has like four, it's like fire, medical, weather, but active shooter. And so once they activate that app, everyone's phones go off. Like, your phone's been going off during bad weather lately, right? So it goes off and alerts everyone. But it's also tied to Brown's County, so 911 immediately gets that notification as well. I think, I hope I didn't make this up, but I think also 911 will connect to the phone that's set it off, and so they immediately start getting that information. But again, that app was three, four thousand dollars yearly.
Implementation is what's so expensive.
I've got another question. What is the, what have, what has been done as far as active shooter drills announced a year? What's the, what drills have y'all had to prepare the students in addition to the faculty staff?
We've only had the teachers talk to the students about it and show the little kids and the older kids where to get during an active shooter, which is out of sight. We've done that because we've struggled as administration trying to figure out, how do you have that drill and not have a high school kid text mom or dad, you've got an active shooter? And then you've got media out here. So our thing right now is we've only talked to the teachers. Teachers, this is what you would do. And the teachers have gone and talked to their kids. Kids, this is what you would do. We haven't actually had that drill because we don't wanna set off a false alarm.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
Again, Alan, we had several times a year the drills. They had everybody alerted ahead of time. We knew like a week in advance, there's an active shooter drill. They would tell us on the app, active shooter drill in fifteen minutes, you will get an alert saying that there's an active shooter. Do not be alarmed. Like, this is just a drill. Like, we had five or six advance notices. And then they did it, and then whenever it was over with, they said, drills complete, you know. I mean, it was, there was no surprise. But I think the drill, I think the drill is important.
Sure. I agree with you.
I would like to suggest it.
I agree with you. And we thought about that. And then we had someone in our meeting play devil's advocate. Well, if I'm planning something, and I know you're gonna have an active shooter drill, why don't just wait till you have the drill? Then everybody thinks it's a drill.
Well, they know what you're gonna do.
Well, they know what you're going to do. That's, there's no a hundred percent, this is the best way to do it. That came up in our conversation. Why don't we just send a message home? Why don't we let our kids know before we do it? Well, if you've got someone that's thinking about doing it, now, when are they gonna do it?
Have you thought about doing the drill just with the administration staff?
We have it. We will be doing that. We will be doing that during staff development.
Okay. They're the ones that are gonna be direct.
Yes.
And the classrooms do have their safe area marked off already.
Yeah, we've had those taken off, so the kids and teachers...
Do we have door locks?
Yes.
Or the door immobilizers?
No, we don't have any door immobilizers yet. Yeah, all our classrooms, they stay locked.
But part of the training gives you like everyday items to show you how to keep somebody from coming in too.
Good point. Anything else? I thank y'all for your questions and attention, and I'm gonna turn the lights back on. Okay. Any motions returned?
I've called the board on regular meeting deal, second rate. Everybody must stay. I've called the board on regular meeting about ISD. We are not taking action on item number two. We're going on that to our meetings. We're moving to item number three, which nobody signed up to speak, which is to item number four, consent agenda. We had a amendment to the minutes that are in progress, so we're approving those amendments that are in progress.
Yes, ma'am. So I recommend the board approve the consent agenda presented with the corrections to last month's minutes, for the minutes from last month.
Hold on. Second. Motion second, okay, right hand. Motion carry seven oh. Item number five, can't consider movement.
Second. Scott, seconded. Can't hear. Somebody made a motion, somebody seconded. This is why we're taking no action on item number two, because they can't hear when we're set up like this. And that's my fault. Item number five, Mrs. Juiski, you have elementary report.
I've heard a few things. The elementary's gonna run around like crazy. It's a very busy part of the year. I think, yeah, we've heard it referred to as May December. It's like December, the craziness of December without all the... So that's kind of where we're at. Our team's working real hard. Today, we had fifth and sixth grade band field trip to Typhoon Lagoon. Today, we also fifth and sixth art field trip to the Paguian Safari and U-Painet. Last week, fifth and sixth had their regular field trip for all the classes. So they went to Safari and Bush Library last Friday. That was last Friday's. And then also on last Friday, we had pre-k, hinder graduation. And thank God, ETO has been feeding us because a lot of us have been really running on to you. So ready to wrap up this year. Got a lot of fun things going on. We have second and through sixth grade award ceremonies this week as well.
Sorry. I apologize. Mr. Ross is not here. He took the seniors to, he asked to Texas today for senior trip. He didn't leave me anything for our secondary report, so I'll just move on to the superintendent's report. Pretty short this month. Last week, I went to the superintendent's monthly meeting in Region Six. Couple things that were brought to our attention, key bills that could affect us. Senate Bill Two, twelve and twenty-nine. Senate Bill Two had to do with property tax reform and there being a two percent growth limit for ISDs. That's not really good for us, but we'll see. Everything's still in a house or a committee. I have no idea where this stuff is. House Bill Twelve had to do with TRS contribution rates. I read that. What I got from it, it looked like there was gonna be a one-time increase in TRS contribution, and it was like it was gonna be five hundred from the state and five hundred from the district. I don't know why you make a one-time contribution like that. That's what I read, but again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure what the policy was saying. Just be aware, though, if, we may as a district have to increase our TRS contributions. Don't know where that bill will go. That's Senate Bill Twelve. Senate Bill Twenty-nine was bad for school districts, and it was setting in place, may not use public funds to pay certain lobby expenses. Essentially, we are members of TASB, Texas Association of School Boards. We're members of TASSA, Texas Association of School Administrators. We're members of TRE, Texas Rural Educators Association. All those people go to the legislature and lobby for us, what's best for our school districts. And essentially, if Senate Bill Twenty-nine passed, we would have no say whenever they meet to pass legislation. The good thing about that, the last thing they'd have read is like SB Twenty-nine was gonna be dead. So that is a good thing for school districts. Then I went back to Huntsville Friday afternoon for a training for Byboard, which is a purchasing co-op. And essentially, it would help us reduce our revenues of purchasing through Byboard. So we'll start checking into that as well. That's the only thing I had, just a reminder, June seventeen, eight thirty A M., a budget workshop, so...
Okay. Item number seven, consideration canceling the regular June...
About six?
Oh, six, I'm sorry.
Six is a policy you guys approve... Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Six is the preliminary taxable values from Brown's County. We got this this month, so in your board package, you see what was sent to us from the appraisal district. And the third page there in that section is just something I threw together. It shows you what the preliminary values were last year for twenty-eight eighteen, and then what the difference was. And we got our certified values for twenty-eight eighteen. And then you have the value there for our preliminaries for twenty-nineteen. And then down at the bottom, what I have there is collection rates for at a dollar and at a dollar four. And you can see how much it would have been, how much it would increase from last year's tax collection. The reason I have a dollar four there is because I read something about tax compression, and one of the runs they made was at a dollar. So the state telling us we can no longer tax at a dollar four, it has to be at a dollar. Again, not knowing which one we're gonna have to do, that's why you see a number there for a dollar and a dollar four, and what the increase would be for next year. So again, no decisions need to be made about that, just relaying the information so you know where we're standing when we start talking about next year's budget.
Item number seven, consideration canceling the regular June...
We just have a number of people in and out in June. We typically have a June board meeting and then cancel July. More conflicts are created in June this year, so I'm just asking, we cancel Junes, give people a summer break, and then we'll have a July this year. And it would be our regular scheduled date of July fifteenth.
Okay. I make a motion. I have a motion second by Luke. Those are favoring again. Motion carry seven oh. Item number eight, consideration approval of the local investment.
I'm sorry, this is the one we do annually. It has to do with CDA local. Essentially, the board assigning me to serve as the investment officer for the district. I just recommend we approve that policy, again, at CDA local.
Second. Okay. Motion second in discussion. Okay, right hand. Motion carry seven oh. Item number nine, consideration authorizing superintendent, teacher deployment contracts and professional expedite assignments here for twenty nineteen. Well...
Well, yeah, what I've asked for there, our policy would support you guys giving me the authority to hire without board approval. We've talked about this a couple times from different viewpoints. One, a few have said, I'm approving people for hire that I've never met. That makes sense. But also, what I have here, and what I'm asking, is just for those summer months that are tough. That's the hiring season for the school district. July eighth, I believe, this summer is the last day for someone to turn in a resignation. Our next board meeting wouldn't be until July seventeenth. It's difficult to hire a teacher from another district by telling them, hey, we wanna hire you, but you won't be official until mid to late July. So all I'm asking for is that authority that would just start tomorrow, May twenty-first, and go until September sixteen. That's our September board meeting. Obviously, if we hire anyone during that time, I'm gonna give you a hiring updated at those board meetings to let you know who we hired, what position we hired for, and so forth. So I just ask that you grant me the authority to hire during that small timeframe.
Someone... Motion second in discussion. Okay, right hand. Motion carry seven oh. Item number ten, consideration Dr. New K through eight, EOA...
I was gonna let Mrs. Juiski tell you what you see there in your packet. She did a wonderful job taking care of this and putting this information together.
Yes. And for everyone else that doesn't have this, it's gonna be on our website. It's the presentation that I put together. And it just kind of gives an overview of our review process. We use all of our K through AIDS, English Language Arts teachers, reading interventionist, technology director, and myself. And the timeline, we started in January. The committee members were selected. We went to a half-day training because we have new standards that are coming up next year for English Language Arts. So everybody was getting a refresher on that and how that's gonna look for our district when we adopt our new curriculum. And it was really important to us that we kind of all had the same idea in mind, what we wanted. We all wanted to be aligned. We all wanted whatever curriculum we had to reflect the practices that we believe in. So February, the committee went to the textbook adoption showcase at Region Six, and they chose their top three options. Those top three options sent us lots of samples, and the teachers just had a chance to, they delivered first straight to their classrooms based on what grade level they were teaching. And so they got to use those textbooks and those samples to teach lessons to see what they liked the most. March through April, I'll finish it to May, so after May, they voted on their top choice. Their top choice was the Hoben-Mifflin hard work for the overall curriculum. But then we thought, you know, what if we could mix it? What if we liked from this one that maybe we didn't like from the main curriculum? And we thought that the McGraw-Hill curriculum had the better phonics program. We all liked it a lot better. So we're gonna be mixing our curriculum. So we're gonna do Hoben-Mifflin hard work for the writing and the reading instruction. And then when it came to the phonics and spelling, we're gonna go to McGraw-Hill. It had the number, it was rated the number one phonics for Texas by the Education Research Analyst, differentiated spelling list, and we just felt like that was really important. It was all just real streamlined for all the grades that will be incorporated phonics all the way up to fifth grade mixture. I did make a little typo on that last slide where it says next steps. What I forgot to say, it says the quote for grades K through eight, HMH into reading premium package. That was just Hoben-Mifflin. I was supposed to add in there the McGraw-Hill also. So total, McGraw-Hill and Hoben-Mifflin is gonna be sixty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty. We come in under of what's already in our IMA funds.
You got any questions for Mrs. Juiski?
We are supposed to get another deposit of about seventy thousand dollars into our IMA funds. And so we might be, I'll meet back with the teachers and see if they wanna upgrade anything that maybe they didn't like.
We currently have seventy-six, seventy-seven thousand dollars in IMA money. So you can see this sixty-eight thousand one sixty comes in. Well, everybody...
That includes on-site training.
Is that for, is that for the year? I mean, that's for eight years. That's eight years. If they only allot you so much money for every, every two years, right?
Yes. We'll have, we'll receive our IMA money, start of this next year, and it'd be around seventy thousand dollars. But when we make this purchase, this amount of money will get us through the next eight years with that material. And so that new IMA money will be for any other subjects we need to adopt or instructional materials we need to replace over the next two years.
And one thing I was open to is just the numbers of the quantities and everything, and how it's just what we have. Are we giving it ourselves any room for growth?
Yeah. We, I did about four to five extra. We also have online. Both our curriculums are gonna be digital as well. So the neat thing that they, they get a new student, and they can take a copy before we can order a new textbook, and then they can do that right then. But usually, we have, we have no problem ordering a few more extra books if we need it. But I went ahead and, this is the price that's giving us about three, four to five more textbooks for those classrooms.
Hey, I recommend the board approve the adoption of the new K through eighth grade ELA curriculum. That's presented.
Make a motion that be adopt the new program?
Okay, second. Motion second by Luke. In discussion. In discussion. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh. Item number eleven.
Okay. Item number eleven, twelve, and thirteen actually separated out those local policies we just talked about. So each one, what you have in your board packet would be the wording that would allow us to implement a guarding program. So as we vote on this, you would be voting to approve those changes in those policies. You'll need to make a motion, you need to vote on each one of them separately, but I don't know, I don't think you need to chime in each time, so. But I'm gonna ask that the board consider editing CKA Local, GK Local, GKA Local, and DH Local, so that we as a district can implement a guarding program by having board-appointed employees carry these over.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. In discussion. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh. Item twelve, same thing. Second. In discussion. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh. Item thirteen, same thing. Motion, second by Luke. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh. Okay. There you go. Item fourteen, first name.
We had one resignation, Jennifer Avery. We're excited for her. She is truly starting a new chapter in her life. She's in the process of building a new home and getting married, remarried soon. And that home's being built in a Brenham area. So it's my understanding she's obtained a job in Brenham ISD. We'll miss her, but she submitted her resignation. And then we have some hiring recommendations. I don't know, Mrs. Juiski, do you want to just say worry about any of those, or?
We just felt like they were very strong applicants for the positions that we were hiring. We are still interviewing once we get in. Okay, you know, we have backup lists for anybody that can't do it or resigned last minute in July. I would like to point out, I am recommending Hannah Pointer. She has been our elementary teacher, received a special education certification this year. She's been going in the second semester into the classrooms with special ed students. She also volunteered to provide inbound support for one of our students during the week. She's gone on her own and with other teachers on campus to further her knowledge in that area. We're just, we're really glad to see one of our own get to especially develop herself and have been something that she really likes, so I'd like to look that up. But we're very confident and proud and excited of all the new hires that we're gonna have this year.
Can I ask a question about, obviously, Hannah Pointer, we know her. What about, is it Kristin Steinman, Christine Harris' experience, does she have?
I'm not sure.
Because that's something that we kind of want to know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I wanna say it's probably around thirteen or so. Oh, thirteen, I'll be back to you on that though.
Thirteen or so?
Approximately. I'll just have to get back to you on that.
We need two motions, one for the board and then the second for the election. Who do you start with, your recommendation report? Motion for the recommended employee deployment, I'll second. Discussion. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh. One for resignation, motion for resignation, second for resignation. Motion by Carolyn, second by Luke. Close and favor your hand. Motion, period seven oh.